Well, good afternoon, everyone. Nice to have you here with us. And a call to order, our July 2, 2018, regular city council meeting. It is approximately 5:00. And I'll start with a, please, with a roll call.
Mayor Jim Lane.
President.
Vice Mayor Guy Phillips.
Here.
Council members Suzanne Clapp.
Here.
Virginia Cordy.
Here.
Kathy Littlefield.
Here.
Linda Millhaven.
Here.
And David Smith.
President.
Acting City Manager Brent Stockwell.
Here.
City Attorney Bruce Washburn.
Here.
Budget Director Judy Doyle.
Here.
City Auditor Sharon Walker.
Here.
And the Clerk is present.
Thank you. Just some items of business. We have, if you would like to speak on any of the subjects, inclusive of a public comment, we have a white card here that the city clerk is holding up overhead here to my right. And if you have any comments, written comments, that you'd like to give to us, they are that yellow card she is now holding up overhead, which will be for any of the items on the agenda, and we will read them during the proceedings. And we have Scottsdale Police Officers Jason Glenn and Anthony Wells are here with us this evening. If you have need of their services, they're directly here in front of me, up on the mezzanine there. And the areas behind the council dais are reserved for the council and for staff. We do have restroom facilities over here under that exit sign over here to my left, if you have need. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask the Vice Mayor to lead us in the pledge. Vice Mayor Phillips, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the invocation, this evening, we will, instead of formal invocation, I'd like to ask for us to take a moment of silence to consider some of the migrant children that were subject to a terrifying stabbing rampage in Boise, Idaho, just a couple of days ago. And so, just give some thought to, obviously, how we all would hope that we can get along together and that we don't have that kind of thing, much less children of such tender years. So if we would, just a moment of silence and thoughts and prayers. Okay, a nice item from our mayor's report today. I'd like to give a little bit of background information on our city auditor, who I believe is here with us. Sharon, are you here with us? Should you go ahead and at least stand so we can see you? I know, but our city auditor here, their city auditor's office is subject to a peer review, and they won the highest rating award that's available within that category of things in that review. And recently, their city auditor's office received that rating with indication of full compliance with government auditing standards for the three years reviewed, January 2015 through December 2017. The review team commented on the well-constructed quality control system that assures audit quality and the effectiveness at working within the strong audit framework provided by the Scottsdale Charter and ordinances. It is significant to mention that there were no recommendations for improvement noted. So, again, Sharon, if you could stand, we'd like to congratulate our city auditor Sharon Walker. Good work, Sharon, and to your entire team. Thank you. Okay, we don't have any other presentations, and we've come to a point of public comment, which, we have no public comment cards. Is that correct still? Okay. Okay, but public comment is a period of time reserved for citizen comments regarding non-agendized items with no official council item to be taken on those items, and the comments are limited to issues within the jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes, so it's five, a maximum of five speakers at that time. But we have no public comment requests at this point. There is an opportunity at the end of the meeting, if in fact some, there is a request at that time. An extra order of business is I would like to request to approve the work-study session minutes of June 5, 2018, a regular meeting minutes of June 12, 2018, and special meeting minutes of June 12, 2018. Do I have any corrections and/or adds, deletes, or if not, a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved, Mayor.
Motion made in second. I think we're then ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye. Those opposed, with a nay. Aye?
Aye.
And register your vote. So done. Minutes have been accepted, approved unanimously. Moving on to our consent items, 1 through 25. We do have a request to speak on one of the consent items, but before that, I would like to say that there's been a request by Councilman Smith to pull item 14.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I pull item 13, please?
And then, as we've just heard, Councilwoman Littlefield would like to also pull for presentation and vote.
Yes, thank you.
And move it to regular agenda. Okay, those two items, 13, I'll start with 13, just so we know what it is that we're pulling. 13 is the Granite Mountain and Fraser Field Trailheads Construction Phase Services contract, and it's a request to adopt Resolution 11195, authorizing a construction manager at-risk contract for that project. And item 14 is 68th Street and Pima Road Bridges Preconstruction Phase Services contract. It's a request to adopt Resolution Number 11199, authorizing a construction management at-risk contract on that as well. So those are the two items that we will pull and put into our regular agenda. So they are not included with the consent items. We do have one request to speak on item 17, and that is from Lisa Randall, if she'd like to come forward and speak on that item. And item 17, for the record, is fiscal year 2018, 19 Human Services General Fund Program allocations.
Thank you, Mayor Lane, Vice Mayor Phillips, and council members. My name is Lisa Randall. I reside at 9655 East Palm Ridge Drive. I'm here to not complain or convince, but to express gratitude. I am the manager of Community Relations at Family Promise Greater Phoenix, and for our guests here in the audience, Family Promise is an emergency homeless shelter for families with children and their pets located right here in Scottsdale. I would just like to say, on behalf of our Executive Director Ted Taylor and the families that we serve, thank you for your support, your partnership, and your commitment to your community and those in your community who are suffering the loss of their home. And these are family and children on the streets. You are our largest supporter, funder, and I have some exciting news. Recently, our board voted to double, more than double, the number of families we serve from 100 to 250. How are we going to do that? We're expanding into the East Valley in 2018, in the fall, and into Glendale in 2019, with the support of both city councils and mayors in these towns. But I'm going to give you a little teaser. We're also going to be expanding our footprint in Scottsdale, and we're really excited to share with you soon. But from the bottom of our hearts, thank you. Thank you for approving the funding, the recommendations of the Human Services Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. And you know that my policy and protocol is never to applause, and I'm not going to allow it now, but if I were to, it would be now. But thank you, please. I appreciate that very much, and congratulations on all of that. Okay, we're moving then on to the consent items. There are no further comments on consent items, and nothing further from the council. So do I have a motion to accept, in their present form, the consent items 1 through 25, absent item 13 and 14, which are being moved to the regular agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. A motion's made by Councilwoman Littlefield, and second by Councilwoman Cordy. We think we're now ready to end the vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye. Those opposed, with a nay. Aye. That's unanimous then, 7-0 on those consent items, absent item 13 and 14, which have been moved to the regular agenda item. And we thus will begin with item 13, looking for a presentation, and certainly a separate vote on that, but if we could start with a staff member that might be able to give the council, and in this case, Councilwoman Littlefield, a presentation on item 13.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dan Worth, Public Works Director. We don't actually have a formal presentation prepared for this item. The action is the award of a construction phase services contract for construction of two trailheads for the Preserve Granite and Fraser Field Trailheads. I can answer any questions that Councilman Littlefield or any of the rest of you may have. We also have Kroy Ekblod, the Preserve Director, that's here, that can answer questions that are more in his area.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Worth. Councilwoman Littlefield, certainly to start.
Thank you. That's really what I just wanted to make sure of, is we had a lot of changes on this agenda in the last couple of days, and I wanted to make sure that there is still nothing in this question for the living pads at either of these trailheads. And all of that information is still gone, as we have been promised that it was.
Mayor, Councilwoman Littlefield, that is correct. There is nothing in this GMP, in guaranteed maximum price, that you're going to be approving, should you decide to do so, to put living pads or any accommodations for a campground host.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Worth, on that. And with that, then, I would accept a motion on item 13. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Littlefield, and second by Councilman Smith. They were then ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye. Those opposed, with a nay. Aye. It's unanimous, 7-0 on that item 13. Moving on to the next item that was removed from the consent to the regular agenda, and that is item 14, that is 68th Street and Pima Road Bridges Preconstruction Phase Service Contract, and it's a request to adopt Resolution 11199, authorizing CM at-Risk Contract 201897 COS with FNF construction, an amount of $214,834.32, to provide preconstruction phase services for the 68th Street Bridge Reconstruction Project and the Pima Road Bridge crossing at the Arizona Canal Project. And Mr. Worth standing in place. Welcome back again. So if you could give us a little bit of background on that, and this was, can be directed in part to Councilman Smith, but if you could give us all of the presentation on that.
Sure, Mayor. The basic background on this is, again, this is a CM at-risk, in this case, not construction services, but preconstruction services. We're still designing these two bridges, but this is the contractor that's going to build the project, and they work with us during the design phase to do constructibility review, to do cost estimation, and various things that the contractor can nail down during the design phase portion, to preorder materials so that we're ready to go in January, when we have the opportunity to build these projects. I've talked with you previously about the 68th Street Bridge replacement. That is somewhat of an emergency unplanned replacement as a result of some deterioration that we discovered during routine inspections. This is the next phase of that project, the preconstruction services for the contractor that's going to do the bridge replacement. I've added another bridge, the Pima Road Bridge. This is not an emergency. This is not a bridge that's deteriorating. This is a bridge that is part of the regularly scheduled, already approved in our five-year CIP project to widen Pima Road from Crail, which is just south of Indian Bend, south to Chaparral. It's about a 13.5 million dollar project. It's an ALCP project, so we get county funds for that. It's also a project that we're partnering with the Salt River Pima Community with, so we're paying roughly 12% of the project costs. It's already in the budget. The reason that we have this in the same contract is because of the timing. They both are going to take advantage of the canal dryup, and because the skill set is the same, the bridge replacement. So we did a solicitation for a single contractor to do both bridges at the same time. Separate funding source, this one, we already got the funding set aside for 68th Street. You have previously approved $400,000 for 68th Street to do design and preconstruction services. This uses that money. We will be coming back with a request for additional funds, likely in the fall, when we have a construction estimate and we're ready to start ordering materials and doing the preparation for construction. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Worth, and go right to Councilman Smith, then.
Thank you, Mayor. Mostly, I just wanted this item pulled because I think a lot of the citizens are aware of the 68th Street Bridge, and aware of the fact that we have to make a major construction project there, and aware that you can't currently cross it except on two lanes, so I want to let them know sort of the status of it, and I appreciate that update. I don't think most citizens were aware of the Pima Road Bridge, and as you pointed out, this is not an emergency. This is just part of the Pima Road widening program. And it's probably worth citizens understanding that this Pima Road widening project is the kind of thing that we are always talking about when we talk about these, what we call ALCP projects, but the projects where we get a lot of funding from the county, and in this case, from the Maricopa Indian Community as well. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Worth, but I would like to know if you have some better idea of what the 68th Street Bridge might cost. I think I put you on the spot a few months ago, and probably shouldn't have, and if you want to dodge the question again, why, but you got any good guess right now?
Councilman Smith, we are still working through the design. I gave you a wild guess a couple of months ago. I can give you a slightly more refined guess. We do have a concept, and the concept's a little bit more expansive than what we had originally anticipated. Because of SRP requirements, we have to actually raise the height of the bridge, and because of our requirements to have suitable slopes for traffic, that means we basically have to replace the entire intersection at Indian School and 68th Street, which we are anticipating doing with a roundabout right now, to take advantage of this opportunity to alleviate some traffic congestion issues. All that pulled into the project gives us a price tag. We think, again, just a preliminary estimate, somewhere in the neighborhood of $6 million.
And if we do that, thank you for the estimate, and I promise not to hold you to that, but I think it's informative to have some scope of project number. If we do that, and if we have to execute this project by January 19, that means it will be in this year's capital budget for transportation. And we already approved a capital budget for transportation that didn't have this project in there. What's the process by which we will, if you will, amend that budget, or how will we fund this?
If you recall, when we approved the tentative budget approval for this year's budget, we showed you a five-year plan for the transportation fund, the 2/10% sales tax, and we projected at the end of the five years, we had $2 million that weren't allocated to any projects. So that $2 million is what we have unallocated to pay for essentially a $6 million project, plus whatever else comes up.
I can do that math. We have a problem.
So we're going to be reprioritizing. We are already looking at some of the things that made it into the program that we may have to make a recommendation to the council to postpone in order to be able to do this repair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Mr. Worth, on that. Then we're then ready to accept a motion on that item. Motion to approve by Councilman Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cordy. So we're now then ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by aye. Those opposed, with a nay. A motion is approved, 7-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Now we move on to our regular agenda items, our regular, regular agenda items. And we'll start with item 26, which is the Old Town Character Area Plan, Non-Major General Plan Amendment. You know, I probably should have taken a moment at the beginning just to welcome some of our guests from the continent of Africa, a number of different nations that are here, representing nations in Africa that are among our audience. And I was told by the gentleman, I don't know, Hector, is Hector here? Yes, Hector, and from ASU, who is actually hosting them here to spend some time here in Scottsdale, which is always delightful for everyone. We hope they're having a nice time, as well as learning some things. But I was told that they may have to leave a little early, so I just wanted everybody to know that this is not a staged protest. If they get up to leave, it's only because they have a schedule to keep somewhere else. But in any case, welcome, and certainly glad to have you here. I'm sorry about that, Erin, yes.
Mayor Lane, members of council, Erin Perro, Long Range Planning Manager, City of Scottsdale. Tonight, I'm here to present Case 1 GP 2018, which is a non-major general plan amendment to update our downtown plan. I will go over the majority of the slides fairly quickly, since I went over most of this in a study session with you publicly last month, and then I'll spend a little time on a few changes that have been made to the plan, based on some of the council feedback that we received at that study session, and also some of the things we've heard from community members since that study session. So as you know, the 2009 downtown plan was an update to our original 1984 plan, and consists of six chapters. We have gone through a two-year process to update the plan, starting with a staff assessment of the plan with regard to existing conditions, and also what's been implemented under that plan. We've then worked with various departments throughout the city to update the plan, and that's the content in the plan that you have in front of you this evening. And we've also incorporated into that content recently adopted policies or plans that you have seen and adopted since 2009. The good news item coming out of the 2009 downtown plan is the vast majority of the implementation items we sent out to do under that plan have been implemented, so we need a new implementation program to take us through the next 10 to 15 years. In terms of public outreach, we have met with various boards and commissions and incorporated their input into the plan, as well as various community groups, individual property owners, and individual downtown stakeholders as well. So some highlights of major changes or updates to the plan include incorporating or converting our urban neighborhoods to downtown districts to align with the tourism documents that are more recent. Those include documents coming out of our tourism department here at the city, as well as documents coming out of Experience Scottsdale. We also talked about last month our development types map. Currently, we have two development types in downtown, a type 1, which is our lower development and intensity, and a type 2 for all other. However, under the zoning ordinance, we recognize that we really have a type 3 north of the canal and around the medical campus, because in the zoning ordinance, bonus building heights are 150 feet in those areas. So we're proposing in the updated plan to label those as a type 3, so it's clear where that can happen in downtown. And then we're also asking council to consider a type 2.5, which is a new concept for the plan, where development bonus heights could be up to 120 feet in that area, and that's a small area west of Goldwater and north of Indian School Road in the Tan. And then two new type 3 areas, basically east and west of Scottsdale Road, north of Fifth Avenue, and around the Liloma and Museum of the West area. If council should choose to adopt all of those suggested development type areas, the new plan, or the new map on the right, would be what would be included going forward in the plan. And a companion text amendment, which is on your agenda following this item, would adjust the zoning ordinance to go along with such adoption. In the Character and Design Chapter, two things that are happening, a new pedestrian and open space master plan would be incorporated into the downtown plan. This is something that's been worked on, and council has discussed in a couple of different study sessions over the past two years. You would be adopting that plan as part of an updated downtown plan. And then we are proposing to do away with the Public Facilities Chapter of the downtown plan, mostly because it's repetitive with things in character and design, so we would take out that repetition. Anything we needed to retain from that chapter would move to Character and Design or the Implementation Section of the new plan. With regard to mobility, the main focus in addition has been on bicycling. We don't have any goals and policies in the plan currently with regard to bicycling, so that's bicycling for our residents, our tourists, and our commuters, and you'll see those policies in the plan. In Arts and Culture, we've incorporated the Downtown 2.0 implementation suggestions from that tourism study that was completed last November, and you can see the various things that we've added in terms of goal and policy language to incorporate into that. With regard to Arts and Culture, just prior to the Planning Commission recommendation hearing, we heard some public feedback from Scottsdale Gallery Association and other citizens with regard to a specific policy in that chapter, and that's AC 3.8, which currently is written in the plan in front of you to foster public-private partnerships, to continue artist-in-residence programs. So just to give you some facts surrounding that policy, it is existing plan language. It was adopted in 2009 as part of the plan. We do have ongoing artist-in-residency programs in downtown. The majority of council-directed staff to bring back the plan as proposed, so we did do that. So tonight, it will be a consideration for you to decide whether to retain this policy or not. And then Planning Commission unanimously recommended to adopt the downtown plan with the deletion of policy AC 3.8. So that's the recommendation that's come forward to you with regard to the plan. What it wasn't intended to be was the Downtown 2.0 Tourism Study recommendation, so that had some specific public money associated with that recommendation. We did not include any public money or an implementation item in the plan with regard to artist-in-residency programs, so you won't find that in the implementation portion of the plan in front of you. Just to give you an idea, because there have been some questions about what types of artist-in-residency programs exist today. Scottsdale Arts has a variety of programs. They run out of the livery stable in downtown. These tend to be more temporary art-based or experiential art-based. Scottsdale Artist School, on a regular basis, has visiting artists and residents that come and teach classes here, both, they come nationally and internationally. And then outside of the downtown, we know some of our resorts are offering these things to our tourists, as well as taliesin is. In terms of economic vitality, downtown, there's some readjustment of focus in this chapter to downtown as a tourism destination, honing in on some target growth industries for downtown that you see listed on the slide, and then some quality of life from the lens, viewing it from the lens of employee attraction, not just from the resident standpoint. So as I mentioned before, we would be removing the Public Services and Facilities Chapter. Again, any of the content we felt that needed to stay intact is either now in Character and Design or in the implementation program itself. And we have a whole new implementation program for you, as I mentioned- As I mentioned earlier, we've implemented the majority of items that we set out to do under the 2009 plan, so these should carry us forward for ten to fifteen years, should the plan be adopted this evening. So, I'm just going to spend a little time. We did tweak the plan, and I see tweak because these have been minor adjustments based on what we heard at the council study session. So, first, we heard a desire to incorporate additional emphasis on shade and trees. And the plan attachment three that you have will highlight these changes in a in a green text for you so you can actually see what's changed in that plan from the one that you had in front of you at the June work-study session. We did have shade and tree language in the plan already, but we went back and augmented in different areas, and you can see what pages that is on. We also had a comprehensive shade and tree plan, it's like a master plan for downtown, already in the implementation program, and we made sure to enhance that language as well to address some of those comments. There was a desire to really call out that the public outreach should be incorporated into public art processes. And so, we already had some implementation items for public art in terms of their strategic master and work plans. So, we added an implementation item that, in conjunction with those other implementation items, that a comprehensive public engagement planning is our components of those plans, basically. We added Scottsdale Stadium to the Civic Center District text, which was a good catch. So, we added that text in with regard to the Civic Center District language in the plan. In terms of mobility, there was some confusion as to bicycle locker and showers language. So, what we did with that policy item, which is M 7.1, is we incorporated, we basically took it out of the policy language itself, but we did include bicycle infrastructure definition to the glossary, should anyone want to go and see what that is. And then finally, there was some comments about the mobility policy, M 8.3, being limited to just bike-share businesses. When we went back and looked, it was very limited to that. So, we deleted M 8.3 because we have mobility policy 1.5 that talked about different types of sharing programs already. And so, we broaden that to mobility share, which can include ride-share, scooter-share, bike-share. And then we also enhanced 8.1 to also reference ordinances because you will be looking at some of the bike-share ordinance coming forward as a council. As I mentioned before, Planning Commission recommended adoption of Case 1 GP 2018, which would be adoption of the Old Town Character Area Plan with one exception, and that was a unanimous decision to recommend deletion of policy AC 3.8. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate that. And you might stand by while we do have some requests to speak on this subject from the public. So, we'll go to that at this point in time. We'll start with Paul Eubanks.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This is in regards to the 3.8 Artist Residency Program. I do have a retail art gallery here in Main Street. I am a resident of Scottsdale as well, and I'm the Vice President of the Scottsdale Gallery Association. The Scottsdale Artist Residency Program, at first glance, seems like an awfully great idea. I do agree with that. But then one starts to logically think about the type of city that best benefits from such a program, and that is a city with really zero type of fine art presence in it currently. I think some, plenty of Arizona cities would benefit from something like this. But Scottsdale, as you all know, has a world-renowned international art destination reputation for having some of the finest art galleries in the world. I may also want to say that last summer, a few of us got together and started scratching out in paper the idea for the creation of the Scottsdale Arts District. I'm very pleased to say that less than a year later, it has gained great momentum. It has been embraced by city staff, who has helped us immeasurably to find the success of it, and we're we're building this brand and is expanding. An artist residency program, in my opinion, might actually distract from that growing of that brand as it continues to gain strength. And I don't think we need yet another distraction to something that's starting to work, that's starting to turn around and involve much more than just the art community, I might add. I visited with a friend of mine, who's an interior designer in downtown today, and they were quite amazed at the increase in foot traffic over the last year. I would like to thank the Scottsdale Arts District, and its catalog may have had something to do with that. So, I was thinking of a real simple analogy. I played a lot of baseball in my life, so I thought about this concept. How come no major league team is located in the same city as its minor league, triple-A baseball team? And it's simply that they don't work together. They don't need the distraction of somebody dividing their loyalties, of the confusion of which team to go watch. And I would very much suggest with the Scottsdale Arts District now, Scottsdale, in fact, is quite lucky to have what I consider a major league team. I think an artist-in-residency program might risk being a little more of a farm team, minor league team. And again, because of that, we do not need another distraction of exactly where to go in Scottsdale or whom to see to experience the fine art experience. So, I encourage staff to strike policy 3.8 and rely on this great program you already have and its increasing and strengthening brand to organically grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eubanks. Next is Sonny Kurtley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Lane, council members, and Vice Mayor Guy Phillips. My name is Sonny Kurtley. I am the proud chairman of COGS, the Coalition of Greater Scottsdale. Our board members have attended every single one of the presentations on the downtown plan as it continued to morph with public input. We attended all the small presentations that were also open to the public. So, we sent a letter of our full position to the planning commissioners on June 11th, and then we attended that meeting and presented our whole position. Fortunately, staff has made some changes, which we really appreciate. So, I'm going to tell you four things we appreciate, one thing we hope will continue in the future, and then one concern we still have hanging out there. The four that we appreciate, number one, the assurance that is now called Civic Center. I wish that you would educate the Scottsdale Independent Newspaper that there's no such word as mall after Civic Center. Number two, we received assurances that inside the downtown, Old Town Design and Architectural Guidelines, that the old historic Old Town Guidelines that have existed for a long time are included in there, although it's not specified. And our third of the four is we have assurances that the bar and nightclub district will get some boundaries, as in defined. And the fourth one is we really appreciate the unanimous vote of the planning commissioners to support our downtown art gallery district with the deletion of 3.8. And the point was made at that meeting from staff, it doesn't make any difference whether it was in there or not for the existing programs. So, what do we continue to support for the future? We support a frequent downtown trolley route to the Tempe Light Rail Station. And what are we really still concerned about? It's a failure when you look at land use 4.4. It says should. It should say require that when a project receives bonuses and amended standing developments, standard developments such as higher, denser, changes in the development setbacks from the curb, changes in the floor levels, how they step back. I think that what's missing here is that we haven't stated clearly that when we give those bonuses and development amendments, that the public benefit amenities are at a minimum equal to the value that we've added to that project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kurtley. Next is Mr. Bob Pejman.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Bob Pejman, 7130 East Main Street, Scottsdale. And I want to talk on about policy AC 3.8. And I want to be real objective about this and not be reactive in a normal way. So, first, I want to be clear that we don't oppose this sort of a plan or a process if it makes sense, but the key word is if. To illustrate that, the City of Mesa recently spent fourteen, fifteen million dollars in forms of public and private funding to basically construct a fifty-unit artist-in-residence facility for artists to basically live and create there. But do you know why they did it? Because the City of Mesa is trying to be the City of Scottsdale. They don't have the art gallery, so they had to artificially invent it. That's not the situation here. The situation here is that we have about fifty galleries and probably over a thousand artists. So, we don't have a shortage of artists, that's for sure. So, to contemplate doing something like this here doesn't make any sense. Now, going to the Planning Commission recommendation, they basically recommended that council approve of the downtown plan the way it is and delete 3.8. And Erin Perro, who's on the planning department, basically she advised the Planning Commission by deleting this, you're not impairing Scottsdale Arts, public art, the Scottsdale School, cattle track, and canal convergence, you're not impairing any of these. And the question was then, if we get rid of this, what are we getting rid of? And the answer is nothing. So, that's why, in my opinion, it should be deleted so that there's no confusion. Now, one last important point I want to make is that we don't have an issue so much with the method of funding for this, but rather that if you make this a city plan, i.e., you put it into the downtown plan, you're basically you're basically are making it a city program. So, even if you fund it privately, you manage to find people to fund it privately, if it's in the city plan, it's a city program, which means the city can then promote it, they can market it, they can endorse it. And what other business is in that, has that privilege? And so, if somebody wants to come in and gather twenty, fifty artists privately without the city's help and basically rent a space, buy a building, and do this, we've got nothing against that. It's free enterprise. So, that's basically it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pejman. Next is Dean Shiner.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Lane and City Council Members. My name is Dean Shiner. I'm the Chief Advancement and External Affairs Officer for Western Spirit Scottsdale's Museum of the West, and I'm here to deliver a letter on behalf of Mike Fox, who is the CEO and could not be here today. On behalf of the Museum of the West, we urge you to support the proposed update to the city's downtown plan and companion text amendment 1 GP 2018 and 1 TA 2018. We are extremely excited about the potential these updates will create for future development in the downtown area, particularly near our community's own award-winning Museum of the West and the opportunities these amendments will provide for art, cultural events, and public festivals. There will be nothing in our country the likes of the beauty, functionality, and compatibility of what is envisioned for Museum Square. The new Culture Improvements Program language that is encompassed in these changes will strengthen the museum's position within the city's arts community and provide us opportunities to continue to be a premier destination for the city. Scottsdale has always found creative and positive ways to enhance artistic and cultural experiences for our citizens. Please continue this by supporting the proposed downtown general plan update and text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shiner. Next and last is Lance Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and our friends from Africa. Welcome. I'm Lance Ross. I reside on Church Road in Scottsdale. I was fortunate to have been raised in Scottsdale. I went to school in Scottsdale. I live and I work in Scottsdale. I'm a member of the, I was a former member of the Scottsdale Public Art Advisory Board. I'm a member of the Stagebrush Board. My parents were in Scottsdale, ran businesses, and were instrumental in developing the Stagebrush Theater, and I've spent my past forty years in the commercial real estate business. I know that density is somewhat contentious, and it seems to me the decision for density has really already been made. It's a question of how do we get it right going forward. Downtown Scottsdale is an opportunity zone. It is a center of gravity, and to remain so, it must be viable, livable, memorable, and sustainable. There are anchors of activity in every city. When successfully placed, they stimulate the neighborhood, and the city gets a higher return on its infrastructure investment. When anchors connect a mix of uses, the success extends into neighboring communities and rebounds back to increased value. This is the essence of place-making. So, why are we challenged by a change in the text amendment to our ordinance when it's well documented and recently published by the Brookings Institute, that the best qualities of a successful city are density, proximity, authenticity, and vibrancy? Because change is tough. The current surge of private investment in the downtown area is being spurred by the Arts, Cultural, and Entertainment District. The downtown offers residents a place where they can live, work, and play. The mix of historic low-rise storefronts and modern-day diverse mid-rise office, residential, and hotels, together with other uses, is re-imaging the downtown. The transformation done well with a concentration of density will facilitate increased amenities and will attract more people. The ordinance gives us an opportunity to focus on enhancing the soul of our community and not just building buildings. Taking advantage of existing infrastructure and uses, building upon established successes rather than eliminating that which was the catalyst for the reemergence is important for all of us to remember. The changes to the ordinance are a commitment to ensure that Scottsdale arts and culture remain a priority. The increase of density as proposed in downtown area will support not only alternatives of emerging lifestyles in our community, but also existing businesses, theaters, museums, including the Museum of the West and the Scottsdale Art District. These cultural amenities are an important part of our Scottsdale history and remain a significant reason for Scottsdale's attraction. Our success as a community is due not only to its tax-paying citizens, but also its businesses, its volunteers, and its tourism. There comes a time in the evolution of a downtown that instead of looking in the rearview mirror, we need to look down the runway and embrace the future. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. That completes the public comment on item twenty-six on this item, and I want to thank all those who participated with their comments here today. And with that, I will move to any questions or comments we may have from the council. Vice Mayor, Vice Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. Are we voting on both of these at the same time, or are we voting on them separately?
We'll do them separately.
You're doing them separately?
They are associated, of course, but yeah.
Well, in that case, I would move that we adopt Resolution 11181 minus policy AC 3.8.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Phillips and seconded by Councilwoman Cordy. Any comment on it by the second?
No, I do have a question, though, in reference to Sonny Kurtley's question regarding the Entertainment District and clear boundaries. the Entertainment District and clear boundaries, so to speak. Those are included. That is what this is all about, part of what this is all about, from what I understand. Correct, Erin?
Mayor and council members, I don't think I understand the question. I'm sorry.
So one of the questions from one of our citizens was clear boundaries for the Entertainment District. And before, we had no clear boundaries. Could you illustrate where those boundaries are today for that Entertainment District?
Sure. Mayor and council, it does provide a hard boundary to the Entertainment District that we have not had in the past in any of our planning documents, so the update to the plan would do that. And then, Brian, if you can pull up Slide 6, please. You can see it. It's in the light purple area. Yes, in that area there. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, does, so I assume that that satisfies the question?
Mayor, council, I don't think it was a question. I think Sonny Kurtley was saying that she appreciated having that hard boundary in the plan now that we didn't have before.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Littlefield.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with the motion that's on the floor. I think that it is not a responsibility or our job to support or foster artists in residence program. And I appreciate the fact that it's going to be taken out. I think that's a real big step in the right direction. I listened to the Planning Commission's meeting and discussion, and I agree with their vote of accepting this plan with that one change. So that is what I support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Do I understand that the motion that we're looking at or the plan that we're approving does, in fact, delete Section 3.8?
That was the motion, yes.
Okay. Let me ask a different question, and it has to do with the expansion of these other areas, these two other areas that are going to be Type 3 and one other area that's going to be Type 2.5. I certainly understand why we would get ourselves together here and decide to create a Type 3 area for what all of us refer to as the La Loma site, the area near the museum, the artist's school, and so on, because staff and council and even the community have been in conversation with the potential developer of this site for some time, and we've promised that if he bought the land and if he did things to respond to the community desire for a quality development, open space, architectural excellence, a whole laundry list of things, that if he did all of that, we would move among ourselves to make that a Type 3 area. And in very generic terms, having that authority among ourselves to grant that Type 3 designation was our negotiating advantage. That's what we used in negotiation, that and a lot of other things, the price of the land and so on. And I think those negotiations have proved fruitful. I think the project that may eventually emerge on that site will be better for it. And if you were here saying to me, "It is time now for the council to honor its end of the deal and convert that area to a Type 3 zoning with the height that that allows," I would agree with you completely. I cannot for the life of me understand why we, as a council, would sit here tonight and grant the same concession on height and density and whatever for two other sites designated Type 3 now and one other site designated 2.5, when we have yet to have negotiations with anybody, we have yet to see the plans, we have yet to even understand what is proposed. I've spent forty years of my life in negotiations, and I have never, ever found it necessary to negotiate with myself and relinquish in advance of even meeting of the other party what I thought was one of the negotiating advantages that I have. And so now I'm going to turn this into a question for you, Erin, or anyone else that wants to answer. Other than the convenience of only having to Xerox the thing one time, what is the advantage of giving up our negotiating strength here on these other areas? East and west of Scottsdale Road and south of what we all call the Rose Garden. Why would I do that today rather than when I'm sitting across the table from an interested party?
So Mayor Lane and council members, Brian, if you could put up Slide 8, please. When we were considering Type 3 areas throughout downtown, we looked at a variety of criteria, which you can see on this slide on the left. One of those was the downtown 2.0 recommendation with regard to wanting more feet on the street, not just residential, but also office worker feet on the street during the daytime. And that was to maintain really kind of our tourism status for downtown and maintain those things that tourism are looking for in terms of amenities, restaurants, those types of things. Additionally, we had proximity to public spaces. The Public Spaces Master Plan that was, has been incorporated as part of the Character and Design Chapter is represented by the stars on the map on the right. So similar to the La Loma discussions with regard to if you go up in height, you get more open space at the ground level versus a horizontal type of development, you would get, we would get more public open space in those areas that we have deemed appropriate for that or where we're looking to achieve that for downtown over the next ten years. And then we also looked at where it's in proximity to additional Type 3 areas now. So from an urban design standpoint, the La Loma area is adjacent to the medical campus. You would have similar types of development on both east and west of Scottsdale Road. Similarly, we looked at that north and south along the canal bank as well as having similar urban design on both sides. So those are some of the considerations that we went through. In terms of the La Loma discussions, it's really based on the zoning ordinance bonus height discussions. So we would have those similar bonus height discussions in the new Type 3 areas with any new cases coming in as well. So that negotiation piece is really about what the public benefits are that the applicant is providing, and that would occur in those new Type 3 areas as well. So you would still be discussing that as a council and deciding on what those are. The zoning ordinance also has a formula in there for the value of what those public benefits could be as well.
Councilman Smith, Randy Grant, Planning and Development Services. I don't think you're losing any leverage necessarily. I think what this is doing is making it possible for people to come in and make proposals that the council may or may not choose to accept and which may or may not be awarded any bonus height. But it's taking away the structural requirement to go back and change a lot of things. You mentioned the La Loma proposal, and this is a result of that process. If we do not make it possible for others within the downtown area to do this in appropriate places, we can entertain those on a one-by-one basis, and we would end up with the same process that we did with La Loma. But we're hearing that people are ready to move more quickly than that, and we just wanted to make the ordinance agile enough to take advantage of those opportunities if they present themselves.
Well, I hear what you're saying, and it certainly would make it more agile. I'm not sure that's our objective here. I'm not trying to be an impediment to development, but I am trying to preserve on behalf of the citizens every negotiating advantage that they have. And I saw it work well for us in the La Loma site, or at least I think I saw it work well. I think the project may be a better project for that and a variety of other reasons. And other than, other than sort of inviting people to come in to these sections now or saying, you know, you might as well bring your project in because we've taken away one impediment. You call it agility, they call it impediments, I call it our negotiating advantage, and I'm nervous about giving that up on areas where I haven't even seen the project. Let me switch, if I can, to ask you a question. When we had the work study on this, Erin, I think you talked about the potential population that this might accommodate, and I don't recall whether it was in terms of people or office space or density or what. We had some discussion about the land use study that was done in 2013, and you said that land use study contemplated in a ten-year period of time a certain population level. And if I recall, you talked about the population level it will be at with what we have on the drawing board now and what these might do. Am I ringing the bell yet with what you discussed with us?
Mayor Lane, members of council, yes, we have had different discussions about the downtown population, not specific to the downtown plan update. Most recently, it was in November with the downtown 2.0 study, and that had some specific recommendations to achieving a population, I believe it was, off the top of my head, 10,000 for downtown. So that was the most recent discussion we've had at council with regard to that population.
And did we adopt, as a council, did we adopt this downtown 2.0 tourism recommendation package?
Mayor and council, no. As part of the work study session discussion, there was some discussion about incorporating pieces into the downtown plan update. So you may recall on that evening, we had, we came to council asking for council to initiate and open up the downtown plan so that we could incorporate some of those pieces into the downtown plan update, similar to the arts and culture that I presented earlier, for example.
Well, then, just looking at the slides on the screen, I'm having trouble understanding if we're asking the question, "Why should we consider Type 2.5 and Type 3 areas for places other than the La Loma site?" The first rationale for doing that is the downtown 2.0 tourism recommendations, which we have not adopted.
Mayor Lane, members of council, that's correct. The way you would be adopting that particular recommendation, we have not set the 10,000 limit in terms of the downtown plan. We don't have that language in here from the downtown 2.0 study, but we would, we looked at that and considered where some of that height and density might go, and that would, that is the result, is the proposed Type 2.5 and new Type 3 areas.
Well, if I can sift all this down, I'm hearing that we ought to have, in addition to the La Loma site, which we've kind of negotiated with the developer, I'm hearing that we should have three other areas, two of them east and west of Scottsdale Road and one, this 2.5 area, that we should do these for two reasons. Number one, because developers want it, and number two, because it was proposed in a tourism recommendation, Plan 2.0, which we have not yet approved. And I'm not persuaded that that's a reason to do this. And so I'm going to make an alternative motion, if I may. I will make a motion that we adopt resolution 11181, deleting, as was previously done, 3.8, Section 3.8 having to do with the arts incentive. But number two, that it only applied to specifying a Type 3 designation for the La Loma site, only for that site. And that is my motion.
Motion's been made by Councilman Smith. Dies for lack of a second. So we'll continue on. Councilwoman Milhavan?
Thank you, and perhaps my question was answered, but I want to make sure that I'm perfectly clear. So Councilman Smith referred to this as a rezoning, and my understanding is that all the property in our city has a zoning district, and the zoning district speaks to how tall the buildings can be, how dense they can be, what uses can happen in that plot, open space, and lots of other things. And so when an owner comes in for a rezoning, they're usually asking to change the district. So now they add other uses, they can go higher, they can go denser, they change open space requirements, and that is an act, that's an action by city council. So the property owner comes to us, says, "I want to change what I can do." That's a rezoning, and city council opines on that. This is not what this does, from my understanding, what you've shared with us, Mr. Grant. This is simply saying, "If we were to consider a rezoning, here's the conditions we would like to see, here's where we think it makes the most sense." And so there's no property owner tomorrow who can do anything different than they can do today, so it's not giving any existing property owners any additional rights to do anything. They need to come in and make an application to us. Is that right, Mr. Grant?
Mayor Lane, Councilwoman Milhavan, that is absolutely correct.
So then this is just a simple guideline, and so I don't see that we've given away any negotiating, because every project would be considered on its own merit. But what I do like about this is a thoughtful plan that's had substantial community outreach, and it's a community vision for what we want our downtown to look like. And so since we can continue to consider, since we can continue to look at rezoning and changes on a case-by-case, this gives us guidelines that tell us what the community would like to see our downtown look like. And so for that, I think this is just, I'm glad to see this coming forward, and I'll certainly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Just one thing I wanted to add to that, because you did respond to my somewhat of a question, but also a clarification. There is nothing different in the negotiations that took place with regard to this particular property in La Loma. Given the same criteria, the same conditions, that's the scope that we worked within in order to put that together. So it's under the same rules, and it now sets it in place, as it has through this process, of some designation, some methodology and calculation of bonuses in exchange for what might be requested. Is that not right? The negotiations took place with that, as would anything that follows this. And I'll just draw upon a little bit of the history, since I've been around since the incentive side of this took place, and it was always a one-off situation, which we all concurred at the time, this is some ten years ago, that it was a disaster, political and otherwise, not to have some kind of criteria to work within that negotiating scheme. Do I have that just basically right, Mr. Grant, if I might say or ask?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear for all who's talking. So I certainly agree with your earlier part of that. That was clarified by Councilwoman Milhavan. And Councilwoman Littlefield?
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to speak to one other concern that I had as I was reading through this plan, and that is the heavy emphasis that was given to bikes in the downtown area. Most of Scottsdale's fine with the bike, with using bikes to get around in downtown, but the way the bike-sharing programs are being implemented in Scottsdale is a real mess right now. We have abandoned bikes that are blocking businesses, residences, sidewalks, and it makes people who are in wheelchairs and other handicap persons have a really hard time getting around on public ride-aways. So I was surprised to kind of read that it looked like this was a given in this plan, that the bike-sharing programs were going to continue before the council has even agendized the promised ordinance on rental bikes, and I assume also scooters. So this seems like putting the cart before the horse a little bit. I had thought that the long-awaited four ordinance would come before us first so that we could make a determination on it before it went into something like this. so that we could make a determination on it before it went into something like this, and the overall policy on bikes would be determined. This could be seen by some as an attempt to predetermine or influence a council vote, and I'm kind of concerned about that. The wording on it is very vague. For example, it talks about biking facilities. I have no idea what a biking facility is. Is it a building? Is it a charging station? Is it in the public right of way? Is it bicycle racks? How about docking bays for rentals? Should we move in that direction, perhaps so? Or even if it's not, what does biking facilities mean? Where are they located? Who maintains them? And who pays for them? I'd like to have some answers to some of those questions. Our bike ordinance has not yet been presented to us, nor has it been approved by us. If this council determines to terminate the bike rental plan, what does that do to this? How does that affect what we're doing tonight? What if we, what if we determine to expand the plan and, and to have a scooter plan also? Bottom line is, the bikes in this plan are so predominant in the downtown area, and I think it should be deferred until after the council has made a decision on what we want to do and how we want to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
I, I think I want to, well, first of all, I'll clarify. I did use rezoning in the colloquial sense of the word. I know it's not a rezoning that we're looking at here, but for, for many of our lay citizens, if they see buildings suddenly permitted to go 150 feet high that were previously limited to 90 or 66 or whatever, the colloquial term for that is who allowed that rezoning. And so it's not technically a rezoning, I understand that. But I do want to pursue with staff the question. You have essentially said that this is not giving a developer any right that they don't, that they wouldn't otherwise have. Did I paraphrase you correctly?
Councilman Smith, I believe that's correct. It's not giving them a right, it's giving them the opportunity to ask for it.
Well, then let me turn it around. So absent this change, they couldn't even ask for that?
That's correct.
I'm having a tough time thinking that that's not giving them some right. If they didn't used to be able to ask for it, but now they can with impunity ask for it. I mean, I know we'll look at their project and make the usual studious determination of whether it's in the public interest and whatever, but I continue to believe that we are giving away a piece of our negotiating advantage. But I'm obviously, that's not an opinion shared, but my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Clapp?
I'm in favor of the motion, including removing EC 3.8, so I call for the question.
Is there a second to the call to the question?
Second.
Question's called. Then we are then ready to vote on the initial motion, which is to approve absent 3.8, as was described. All those in favor, please indicate by aye and register your vote. Aye. It's unanimous, 7-0 on item 26. So thank you very much, staff, for their presentation on that. And we'll move on to item 27, which is associated. And we have Brad Carr coming to the podium to talk about the Downtown Overlay and PBD District Text Amendment, 1TA 2018. Brad, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you and members of the council. As you mentioned, item 27 this evening is a companion zoning case as one of the implementation tools for the downtown plan. This is the most prevalent and the one we do, can do right away to immediately start implementing some of the goals and policies that the, the plan, as you just recently approved, moves forward. So again, we are looking at, excuse me, changes to the downtown, the downtown overlay and the plan block development overlay districts within our zoning ordinance. Some background, I know you saw a lot of this with our work study session, but for those in the audience that had not seen this, city council had a discussion on this on May 30th of last year. We had a discussion on the bonus provisions and the cultural improvements program. Council directed staff to review those bonus provisions to ensure alignment with the community goals and making sure those bonus provisions continue to provide meaningful benefits in exchange for increased development potential. We also were given the task to review the cultural improvements program. And again, more importantly, as it relates to tonight, align the downtown, the downtown overlay, and the PBD, PBD districts with the proposed changes to the downtown plan. So our objectives with this text amendment are, are just that. Those three sections noted here at the top of the page includes mostly the changes to add the new type 2.5 to our zoning ordinance as well as rename our existing type 2 regional and type 2 medical areas to the new type 3. We're also seeking to create a hierarchy of development standards and unify those application of those bonus development, development bonuses, which are our new section 7.1200. We also did some minor refinements to our public art on private development sites. And we also are now requiring the compliance with our international or with the International Green Construction Code for all PBD developments, whereas prior that was an elective path developer could choose. And again, every time we evaluate the zoning ordinance, we look at other associated sections, definitions, et cetera, to make, maintain consistency. So again, this graphic summarizes the majority of the changes within the zoning ordinance, those being, again, the addition of the type 2.5 to the, to the downtown zoning district and the PBD district. You can see here that type 2.5 matches very closely with the type 2 development standards at 78 feet, 90 feet, but it goes up to 120 feet for those sites that are of 200,000 square feet or more in size. Everything else, again, remains similar across the board. And then here you can see the prior type 2, and the downtown medical and downtown regional just becomes type 3. Again, most of the changes are, are related to that within the zoning ordinance. As I mentioned, one of the other changes was to unify how we approach bonus development standards for the downtown district, but also within the airpark area with the use of our PCP district. That, that district was approved on the consent agenda, the update to that district this evening. But the changes you can see here, the, the major change is the addition of a limitation on where bonus height can be applied on a site. As it exists currently, bonus height is allowed to expand across the site, covering, in essence, if it, the maximum amount it can cover with FAR. This provision allows the city to control where that bonus height goes based on the size of a property. So for instance, an existing property that has a size of two acres would be given an allowance of 90% coverage. That coverage would decrease by 1% for every increase in, in lot size for the development by, of one acre. So it's a one-to-one trade-off. And so as a side got larger in size, the amount that it could cover on the bonus height would be, would be decreased. Then also there is an allowance for a development to purchase additional height over that base allowance with the cost of being 10 times the normal amount. So again, the process, again, we initiated this with planning commission in September last year. We've had some reviews with the city commissions, and of course, a robust public outreach process. We went in front of the planning commission, planning commission recently and got their recommendation, and finally tonight, we're here for your review and possible approval. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. We have no request to speak on this because it's a sort of close association with the previous item, but we do have Councilman Smith who would like to speak on this, too.
Thank you, Mayor. One question to understand, when somebody gets, or when somebody exercises the right to pay the bonus money and request additional height, I think I've asked this question before of, of you, Mr. Grant, but there is an additional finding that we, the council, must make, and that is that, other than the money that they're paying, that this additional height is quote-unquote "in the public interest." Is that correct? Is that still a language that's preserved here?
Yes, I believe that's correct, Councilman.
I think this goes to the question that one of the speakers mentioned earlier. And I, as long as it's preserved in here, I don't have any problem with what we're changing. But I would like for us, meaning you, the staff, and developers to be prepared to tell us what's the public interest in the additional height, in addition to the fact that they pay for it, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Littlefield?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to make sure that with this text amendment that we're going to be putting in, I assume, does this affect anywhere else in Scottsdale, any other land?
Yes, Mayor, and Councilwoman Littlefield, as I mentioned, the changes that are proposed within the, the envelope or the, the umbrella of the downtown update also include some changes to how we deal with bonus provisions throughout the city. So we're unifying that approach whereby if you are in a property within the downtown or a property within our airpark area, which would utilize our PCP or planned airpark core development district, you would utilize the same bonus provisions. And so there's some unification and thereby eliminating any confusion as to how those bonus provisions are applied, whether you were in downtown or outside of downtown. They're going to be applied similarly across the entire city. But those particular areas, the downtown and the airpark, are the only two areas where bonus provisions are currently allowed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor. So I move to adopt ordinance number 4355 and resolution number 11190.
Motion's are made by the vice mayor and seconded by Councilwoman Clapp. Does Councilwoman Clapp like to speak toward it at all?
No, thank you.
Then we do have a motion made and seconded. I think we're then ready to speak, or rather, to vote. There's no further speakers on it. All those in favor, please indicate by aye, and those opposed with an nay, aye. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you very much, Mr. Carr, appreciate that. That completes our work on item 27. And we'll move right on to item 28, which is the fiscal year 2018-19 property tax levies. And we have Ms. Doyle here, a welcome. Judy, nice to have you here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. On June 12th, we held a truth and taxation hearing and a public hearing on the fiscal year 1819 property tax levies and rates. At that time, I had mentioned that state statute requires the hearings to be held at least 14 days prior to actually assessing the levies and fixing the rates. Tonight is the formalization via ordinance of that action you took on June 12th with the unanimous roll call vote and assess the property tax, the primary levy at $31.9 million and the secondary levy at $34.2 million, and fix that combined property tax rate at $1.10 per $100 of assessed value. Tonight, the action is to adopt ordinance number 4358 assessing the fiscal year 2018-19 primary and secondary property tax levies and fixing the primary and secondary property tax rates. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Doyle, appreciate that. We have no cards of comments, and no comments as of this moment, but councilwoman Cordy may have a comment or a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4358.
Motion's are made by Councilwoman Cordy and seconded by Councilwoman Clapp. There's no further comments indicated, so I think we're then ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by and register your vote. Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you very much, Ms. Doyle, and you're standing still at the podium. So for item 29, fiscal year 2018-19, the streetlight improvement district property tax levy presentation.
Thank you. On June 12th, we also held a public hearing on the 1819 streetlight improvement district property tax levies. By a unanimous vote again, council passed a motion to proceed with a levy of $590,463 on the city's 355 streetlight districts to cover electric utility costs of operating those streetlights within the districts. This action tonight is to request via ordinance number 4353 assessing the 1819 streetlight improvement district property tax levy by district.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Seeing no comment, do I have a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4353.
Motion's are made by Councilwoman Cordy.
Second.
And seconded by the vice mayor Phillips. No further comment requested. I think we're then ready to vote. All those in favor, please indicate by and register your vote. Aye, at 7-0. Thank you very much, Doyle. That completes our business for this evening. There's no further public comment, no citizen petitions, mayor council items. But before we ask for adjournment, we want to again, welcome you all for being here and, and staying with us. I anticipated maybe that we've really just captured your attention, so that whatever dinner date you had, you figured this was worth staying for. So it's great to have you here, and thank you very much for being with us. And with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please indicate by aye. Aye, we are adjourned.